A call to order, the March 27, 2024 Board of Education Regular Meeting, and ask if trustee Batatario would please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,
All right, good evening, everyone. We're going to go right into item 2.1 of our agenda, which is a public hearing. Under recently enacted Section 466A of the New York Real Property Tax Law, taxing jurisdictions, including school districts, may extend a partial real property tax exemption to enrolled members of an incorporated volunteer fire company, fire department, or incorporated voluntary ambulance service. This segment of the Board of Education meeting has been designated as the official public hearing. I will now turn the meeting over to our superintendent, Assistant Superintendent for Business, to provide a brief overview to the community of what this means. Alida?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming. I think you know what this is about, and we are excited to offer you this opportunity to give you gratitude for all the work that you do in the way that we know best, limiting your expenses on your school taxes. So I'm sure if you have any questions, you can certainly contact the assessors office. I do want to let you know that it won't take effect for this upcoming school year. It will be in the '25, '26 school year. So he's aware of it. He's waiting for the resolution to be passed, and he will make sure that he takes care of, what he needs to take care of to make sure people who are eligible actually receive the benefits. So I want to say on behalf of the board, and our students, and our staff, that we thank you for all you do, and hopefully this shows one small level or token of appreciation for your work. Thank you.
Test, test. All right, there we go. I'm going to now invite members of the public to come, and you have an opportunity to raise questions, to discuss the resolution. Do we have a microphone set up for anyone who wants to come for our audience? We can probably use Alida's or Maria's if we need to. Would anyone like to come up and make a comment? No, we're good? All right. I know we have virtual folks watching, so I'm going to give an opportunity for anyone watching virtually to make a comment as part of the public hearing. You may do so by showing a raise of hands. I'm going to pause. Illy, is there any raise of hand? Okay. All right. This concludes the question and answer period, and there being no further -- I'm sorry, do we have anything from the board? There being no further discussion, I declare the public hearing to be closed. And I will take a motion to move Section 5.1 up in the agenda.
So moved.
5.1. Real -- hang on. Resolution to extend partial real property tax exemption for eligible volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers. Just settle in, okay? Whereas, under recently enacted Section 466A of the New York Real Property Tax Law, taxing jurisdictions, including school districts, may extend a partial real property tax exemption to enrolled members of an incorporated volunteer fire company, fire department, or incorporated voluntary ambulance service. And whereas, the Board of Education of the Osning Union Free School District has considered whether to exercise the authority provided under Real Property Tax Law Section 466A and extend a partial real property tax exemption applicable to Osning UFSD school and library taxes to those members of an incorporated volunteer fire company, fire department, or incorporated voluntary ambulance service eligible to receive this exemption. And whereas, the Board of Education deems it appropriate and in the interests of property owners within the Osning UFSD that such a partial exemption be recognized to those members of an incorporated volunteer fire company, fire department, or incorporated voluntary ambulance service qualified to obtain such an exemption. And whereas, the Board of Education conducted a duly notice public hearing concerning the extension of such a partial exemption to eligible property owners/recipients under Section 466A of the Real Property Tax Law on February 28, 2024. Now therefore be it resolved pursuant to Real Property Tax Law Section 466A that a partial real property tax exemption of 10% of the assessed value of property that is the primary residence of a member of an incorporated volunteer fire company, fire department, or incorporated voluntary ambulance service with at least two years of service as certified by the Incorporated Volunteer Fire Company, fire department, or Incorporated Voluntary Ambulance Service in which the property owner serves and that meets Real Property Tax Law Section 466A1's eligibility standards shall be implemented and recognized for purposes of the levy of Osning UFSD school and library taxes. And be it further resolved that this partial real property tax exemption shall further be extended to property owners eligible for the purposes specified in Real Property Tax Law Section 466A, subsection 3, subsection 4, and subsection 5, firefighters and ambulance workers with 20 years of active service and unremarried spouses of firefighters and ambulance workers killed in the line of duty or deceased for purposes of the levy of the Osning UFSD school and library taxes. And be it further resolved that the partial real property tax exemption authorized under this resolution shall be effective beginning with the 2024 town of Osning, May 1, 2024 taxable status date, 2024 town of Newcastle, June 1, 2024 taxable status date, and 2024 town of Yorktown, May 1, 2024 taxable status date. Assessment rules. Are those dates correct, Alida? 2024 dates?
It's always a year behind, so yeah.
Gotcha. And be it further resolved that the district clerk shall deliver a copy of this resolution to the assessors of the towns of Osning, Newcastle, and Yorktown.
I'm president. I'm being told that the audience online can't hear what we're saying.
Oh, they can't hear what we're saying?
No.
On now? All right. Point of order. Should we reopen the public hearing if there was no audience able to hear the portion of the public hearing?
They had public comments. The comments were open on Zoom, or no?
No.
Okay. If it wasn't, then you have to open it again.
All right. So I'm going to go back and call for a motion to reopen the public hearing, Section 2.1. So moved. All right. We are reopening the public hearing on the Section 466A of the New York Real Property Tax Law, which is involving taxing jurisdictions, school districts, and may allow them to extend a partial real property tax exemption to enrolled members of an incorporated volunteer fire company, fire department, or incorporated voluntary ambulance service. This segment of the Board of Education meeting has been designated as the official public hearing and has been reopened to include our virtual audience. I'm going to ask if there are any audience members virtually who would like to participate in the public hearing by raising questions or making comments. If you desire to participate, you may raise a virtual hand, and you will be called on by our clerk accordingly. Okay. Are you able to bring Ms. Lavelle in? Ms. Lavelle, can you hear us? Ms. Lavelle, are you there? We can hear you now. Our tech person is coming to make you a little bit louder. Okay. Did you hear what I read about the exemption in the public hearing? All right. This is the portion of our -- I understand. So the only thing we've done in the meeting is had a public hearing on the Real Property Tax Law exemption involving tax exemptions to volunteer fire company, fire department, or incorporated voluntary ambulance services. It's an exemption pursuant to New York Real Property Tax Law. This is open to the public to make a comment about this particular property tax law proposed exemption. Do you have a comment related to that, or a question? Okay. Thank you. Illy, do we have any other hands raised? Okay. Do you need a minute, guys? We're good? Okay. All right. There being no further discussion, I declare this reopened portion of the public hearing to be closed. I will now take a motion to go back to 5.1. Not sure I need a motion, but I don't think it can hurt.
Second.
All right. I've read 5.1, the resolution to extend partial real property tax exemption for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers according to New York Real Property Tax Law Section 466A into the record of the meeting. The recommended motion is available to the public for viewing under Section 5.1 of the agenda associated online with tonight's meeting. Any discussion from the board?
I think procedurally, you should just take a motion for 5.1 again. The last motion, the remotion, wasn't voted on, and you just don't want to be caught in a technicality. So I would take a motion for 5 -- was it 5.1 we're voting on?
Yeah, I think we just did that.
We did that earlier, then we went back to the hearing, and then we came back. There was no vote on the -- you took a motion to go back to it, but there was no vote. Nobody said aye or nay.
I know. I'm asking for discussion before we say aye or nay.
I'm suggesting you put the motion back on the floor again. That's what I'm suggesting.
So the motion on the floor is to not discuss the substance, but to go -- be able to go back to 5.1?
Okay. Point of procedure taken. Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. I will now take a motion for 5.1.
So moved.
5.1, resolution to extend partial real property tax exemption for eligible volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay. Thank you, everyone. We got there in the end. Appreciate it. All right. Thank you, gentlemen, for your service. Okay. We will now continue on with our work session, which is item 3.1, and our superintendent's update. I will turn the floor over to our superintendent, Ms. Fox Alter.
Good evening, everyone. And we've had a very exciting period of time since our last meeting. Allow me just to give a few shout-outs before we get into our budget workshop. First of all, I don't know how you could have missed it. It was all over the news. But the Osning High School Science Research Students attended the Regeneron WSEF last week and had six -- I'll count them again. Six first-place awards, five second-place awards, seven third-place, and seven fourth-place winners. I just can't get over it. So congratulations to our students, to the staff, to the proud parents. Roger particularly, because you're one of that group. But we are just so excited for our students, our teachers, and the staff and families involved, because it certainly takes a village. So congratulations. I want to also extend a hearty congratulations to the Osning High School avid 12th senior, Kathryn Loja, as being chosen as a Dell Scholar. She will receive -- it's huge. A $20,000 scholarship, a Dell laptop, and a number of other perks. Kathryn is our very first avid student to receive this scholarship. So congratulations to Kathryn and her family and the teachers. That is a phenomenal scholarship. We also were excited, and I got to attend for a couple of hours with high school principal, Ms. Langley. The Osning High School Engineering Club, as they were getting ready for their competition, and they were featured in the Journal News. So we love the problem-solving, the engineering. And personally, I have to tell you, I felt like I was back in my days of teaching computer science and trying to figure out the if-bens as they were trying to control their bot. It was just -- I was in my happy place. So it was really a great thing. Congratulations to Jack Bergman and Alana Preisament, whose research earned the top award at the Regeneron WSEF. They won an all-expenses-paid trip to attend and compete in the Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair, which will be held in Los Angeles, California. So congrats to Jack and Elena. Also, congratulations to the cast and crew of Sixth Sister Act on an outstanding performance. Oh, my gosh. The lead unit got into the SUNY Purchase Performing Arts, which is so highly selective, but what a fantastic, fantastic production. It was also a packed, full, and energetic senior citizens prom held right afterwards. So we had a very exciting night last week at Osning High School. I want to extend a hearty thank you to author and illustrator Eric Valesquez for visiting our Park School readers and inspiring them to keep on reading. Osning students and staff rock their socks for World Down Syndrome Day. And I want to thank everybody who attended our March Against Bias session last week. We've been having enriching college visits for our AMD students, York College, as part of our New York Gear Up program. So a lot going on in our schools. So congratulations to everyone. And those are just the highlights, just the highlights itself. Okay.
To the president, would you entertain a motion to move up 11.1, which is our public comment period, open for any topic, and move that up at this time? I'd like to make a motion to do that.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I don't believe we have the policies in place to support this at this time, and I think the board has worked to do that.
That's not accurate. 2350 very clearly says, and this was on the advice of council, very clearly says, "The board president with the consensus of the board may change the regular order of the business at any board meeting." So there's a motion. It's been seconded. I think we have to vote on it to the president. And if there's enough of the consensus, I think we can move this and any other, just like we move anything else around in the meeting respectfully.
We're in discussion about it, right? Before we would vote. So I think you're citing one policy, and you're not citing three other sections where it exists in the policy manual. And I don't think it's the best practice to do. I'm not saying that this is the long term, but I think we should address the policies where it exists. And I understand the session we were in with council. It wasn't complete. That's my point on it, so.
Do we have a discussion from other trustees?
Just add, the point of the motion is something that the board has discussed. And if there's those on the call that, you know, if there's no one on the call, I'm happy to withdraw the motion, because then there's no one else in the audience. But if there's something we've discussed, it is pretty clear in the policy manual. It was discussed with council as necessary, and the answer was crystal clear that this is the procedure currently to do it. And going forward, I understand other trustees have concerns about it. And it will come out of a policy committee to maybe streamline this. But currently, as we are written, it is clear that this can be done, just like we move anything else around in the meeting.
Just my two cents. I think we should decide this, whether or not there's anyone virtually. I don't think it should be conditional if this is to be done.
And the reasoning for this is so we have people -- we're about to get into a discussion around the budget. We've allotted, what, an hour and 45 minutes for it? Robust discussion. And there'll be another comment period after that to talk about agenda items. But this gives those who want to talk about something non-agenda or anything the ability not to sit through two potentially hours plus to do that. And I think in the nature of equity and inclusivity as we try to do this, it's something we should try to do. But again, I guess it requires a consensus. So it's my two cents. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other comments? Or discussion? For discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstention? We have Christine. We have Annie abstaining. We have Frank opposed. Lisa, where do you stand?
Yeah. Based on my last understanding of what we advised by council, I would at this time oppose it due to lack of structure around consistency.
All right. So that's two opposed, two abstentions, three ayes. I think that means the motion does not carry. Is that correct, Illy? Okay. Motion does not carry. Thank you. I will now continue on with Section 3.2, which is the superintendent's budget overview.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Alida and I have put together a presentation based upon the terrific feedback we received from our Board of Education and the discussions at meetings and emails. I think the community here in Osning should be proud of its hard-working board who've spent a lot of time, a lot of hours reviewing things, asking a great deal of questions, asking for more information. And we've been going through a thoughtful process through something that's as clear, you'll hear me say before, as clear as mud. I have to -- I always echo a recent comment made by trustee Annie Gomez, who said she balanced books for a law firm, and this is certainly far more challenging in many ways. I have a sense that's probably why, one of the reasons why the state adopted it. That's my editorial, sorry. But in order to do a reframing conversation and a balcony-view conversation before we get into the nuts and bolts, I thought I'd go through, for the sake of our community and our audience, and most importantly, our board, just a brief review of our development process. First of all, in the fall and in the winter, there are lengthy and detailed individual meetings with our administrators, and basically, anyone that has a budget needs to go through a line-by-line with us. We had a board meeting on February 28, where Alida just gave a brief overview of certain changes in revenue and expenses. Because as we all know, whether it's our personal lives or the school, a budget really is a list of what are expenses and what are the revenues we have to pay those expenses. So Alida gave us a heads-up about that on February 28. The board spent all day here on Saturday, March 9, at a workshop, and we had multiple administrators who gave detailed presentations, and we were available for comments, questions, et cetera. It was an excellent morning. We had budget discussions on March 12, and we continue them tonight on March 27. The goal here is for the board to adopt the budget in order and time for the annual budget vote on April 23. The budget process this year has been challenged by many cost drivers that are impacting many school districts in New York State and in Osning. It doesn't take much. If you're a reader of local media, any of the NISBA information centers, or taking a look at newspapers out in Long Island, every single school district in New York State is being challenged by that. There's an increase in cost drivers, particularly health insurance, ERS and TRS contributions. Just to give a number to it, the health insurance went up $2.8 million. We got an additional amount of foundation aid, and I know many of you who have been watching the news knows that other public school districts are losing foundation aid due to enrollment and not having the safe harbor. Osning did receive an additional 1.3. However, it doesn't even cover the cost of half of the increase in the health insurance alone. Everyone is also experiencing funding cliffs, cliffs based around the COVID funds that were in existence for three years, and others, and other grants that have had funding cliffs built into them, or just they were meant to give money for a three, a two-year, or a five-year period. Overall, revenues have not kept pace with the increase in expenses. Our budget is an educational plan because it dedicates the resources. We need to always keep front and center what is our why. We have an enrollment of 5,019 students. And this is the breakdown per building. At Park, we have 578 scholars. Brookside, 691. Clermont, 758. Roosevelt, grade 5, 325. AMD, the building we're in this evening, 1,046. And Osning High School, 1,621. We were projected to have an enrollment of 4,000 -- this is minus the pre-K numbers. In actuality, as of a month ago, we are at an enrollment of 4,784. That's 120 additional students. Another, as part of the educational plan, that was our why. This is our how. How do we go about educating our 5,000-plus students? We spend our money where it should be spent, on staff. We have 461 teachers, 167 teaching assistants, 101 monitors, bus attendants, security aides. You can see the breakdown in this slide. Psychologists and social workers, 27. Nurses, 16. School counselors, 12. Clerical, including the confidential group, 63. Our wonderful Buildings and Grounds crew, 47. 36 administrators. And we have seven TOSSAs, which are teachers on special assignments. The other part of the how. This year, we are operating with an annual budget of $167-plus million. And we got that. How did we get that? The local levy of $102 million. We got an increase in foundation aid and expense-driven aid. This was all in the budget brochure of last year, $49 million. We used fund balance and capital reserves of $10-plus million and other revenues, such as expense-driven aid, interest, et cetera, that goes in there, and sales tax, $4 million. To take this budget of $167 million and just roll it over into this year gives us $181,643,000. Just rolling it over. It's an increase of $14.6 million or a levy increase of approximately 6.2%. That does not include the asks that many of the administrators asked for as new staffing, or new purchases, or new programs. It's just simply rolling over this year into next, and we would have a levy increase of 6.2. At the last meeting, that amount was identified as a compliant maximum allowable tax levy. It is not. That was a mistake. We would need an override vote for the 6.2. The cost drivers for that were outlined on February 28, and I just highlighted some of them again, not to remind people as to the why. Again, that 6.2% would require an override vote. That's a clarification of the error that was made at the last meeting. But it would still require 6.2% to run this year, next year. A levy reduction in the spirit of, well, what happens if we cut a little bit more than 2% was also discussed. That would arrive at basically 3.95, but that would also require an override. So that brings us to tonight, to this evening. And again, I'm going to reiterate this. I want to thank the board for its thoughtful work. They are taking a great deal of time and attention given to the task this year, because it's -- it's quite a challenge, as well as excellent questions and providing feedback. This is so needed, as this is a complex process this year, and I want to thank each and every one of you for that work. Tonight's presentations and revisions are based upon those questions and feedback, and we're going to try to review the two maximum allowable tax levy options based upon that feedback in a simpler, hopefully, way that we can help everyone understand. We're going to review the maximum allowable tax levy recommended option of 3.28, and then we're going to go through the option that was requested of us. We had a request from the board. What would it look like if we had a maximum allowable tax levy of 1.99%? And what would that look like with the removal of the $8.8 million HVAC AC project here for AMD? In order to get into that and explain it, we have to review the maximum allowable tax levy process, and I'm going to tag-team that with Alita. We're going to go through it step by step. We're going to talk about the New York State portal and its allowances for exemptions to the tax levy, discuss why the two options are different, the impact of a capital line in a budget versus the impact of using reserves to fund capital work, and in all cases, wherever you land, the maximum allowable tax levy will require a reduction in recurring expenses. Tonight, I will discuss a philosophy with regards to how do we approach that. And last but not least, because it's a question we did receive from the board, is that how does tonight's work impact or help support decision-making for the board regarding any potential bond? It is not the intention tonight to go through scope or to take away any serious decision-making the board has to do, but just to give an overview or highlight how certain decisions made now can change the cost of a potential bond. And I think that's important information that the board had asked for, so we are prepared to present that this evening. So, Alita, let me bring up your presentation.
So this is similar to what the superintendent just discussed. Right now, today, obviously, is March twenty-seventh. We will have some items on the agenda that need to be approved by the board related to the propositions that need to be posted or advertised in a newspaper by April four. So those propositions include-
Sorry, point of information, April four or twenty-four?
April four.
April four, okay, thank you.
So the board is going to vote on propositions tonight that need to be advertised in the paper by April four, and those propositions include the budget, the requirements or the permission from the public to use the capital reserve, the positions that are available as vacancies on the board, and the library levy, and vacant positions on the board.
And you can see from the resolution that it doesn't include the amount, it's just you're telling the community when the vote is going to be held, the positions, et cetera, and the anticipation of using capital reserves.
So we do have another board meeting on April sixteenth, assuming that we added it because we will continue to discuss the budget. April twenty-third is when we have to adopt the budget, the board has to adopt the budget, and the final seeker related to the AMD driveway needs to be approved. Finally, the budget hearing itself, which I know the superintendent said before, it's really, it's not a hearing, because you can't really do anything to change it once you adopt it, but it's mandatory, legally required, and then finally, the vote on May twenty-first, which is a uniform day for all school districts. So I think it's important, and you know, when the tax cap first came out in 2014, I believe, or thirteen, and I was here, and I started here in 2011, we talked about how confusing the levy limit calculation is, the cap, the tax cap, the levy limit, the maximum allowable tax levy, MATL, it's all confusing. And then what we all knew at the time, especially us business officials, is that the misnomer around the tax cap limiting everything to 2% is in fact a misnomer and is not accurate. So back then, I developed the five fast tax cap facts, and it was pretty clear of certain five things that were not consistent, and one of those items was that 2% perception that you can never go above 2%. The other perception is that every tax levy, every tax levy limit is different for every school district. You'll see a report that was prepared from Northwestern, Northwestern Bosse, as of last Friday, and you can see the varying amounts of the tax cap for those districts. We, of course, did not report yet until we finalized our numbers, but it's clear, you can see from that document, that everybody's tax cap is different, based on the demographics, based on their budget, based on their exclusion, based on their reserves. It's different.
Just to add to this, under New York State law, and this is where the confusion comes with the capital line in the budget and the capital expenses, school districts can increase their property tax levy above the levy limit for certain costs that are resulting from local capital projects, meaning they can't be maintenance projects, they can't be sort of repair projects, but if you have identified capital projects and things such as leasing, or financing, or rent, or debt service, meaning paying back your loan, or reconstruction of something, or rehab something, those costs are included in your regular budget, identified in the capital line in your budget, and are excluded from the tax levy cap. We know from Jared's presentation, Alita mentioned it multiple times, you can see those exemptions here on the slides, the exemptions that are in the line itself, the capital line in the budget.
So just quickly, I'm just going to go over the two options that are presented here. Currently, the way it stands, the exclusion, the maximum allowable tax levy limit is 3.28%. So like the superintendent said, there are certain items that are excluded from the levy limit. So at the top and under option one, you see there's a big amount of $20 million, and what that $20 million represents is the lease cost for 400 executive, energy performance contract for two that we've had, one in 2014, and one this year. We also are able to exclude our current debt, which is about 4.1. We also are able to exclude any potential projects that we're planning. So all the projects highlighted in yellow are the projects that are included in the 3.28%.
And if you can look at that amount there, that's really important. The security upgrades of 435, the Osning door at 210, the Brookside fire alarm, and the AMD driveway can be paid out of the line. However, the amount that's paid out of our capital reserve, our savings account, 8.8 million, will have to be transferred in to pay for that. So it doesn't, Alita, correct, impact the levy amount, because your expense is being offset by a revenue from a reserve, whereas the other things, because they're in your capital line, they are exempted from your tax cap levy.
So as the superintendent said, the district is in the position where it can continue to offset the capital work that we're asking for with capital reserves. So you'll know and continue to remember that we have a line in transfer to capital of 6.950 million. So of that 6.950 million, we're raising or taking or adding revenue from capital reserve in the amount of 7.5 million to cover the $14 million worth of work that we're proposing in yellow. So when you look at that, if you, it's easy enough to calculate, if you subtract the 14.4 from the 7.5, you'll get to the 6.950. Again, that's the same amount that's in the budget, so there's nothing related to this work that's increasing the levy, because it's embedded in the budget already. So after you do that, the state does require you to also take out building aid. So the amount of building aid comes directly from the state aid runs that were presented in January, so that's the amount. So of the 20 million that's up above, you have to back out the 7.5, and you have to about back out 3.1 in building aid. So the exemption amount is what you find at the bottom, so what's exempted from the entire calculation, which you'll see on the next page that's reported in the portal, is 9.4 million.
Bless you.
In option two, I believe we were asked to take a look at, what would it look like if we took out AMD HVAC work? So when you look at the arm and scope of work under the projects, everything else is the same, but if you look up AMD HVAC work, you'll see there's a zero there in orange, the first cell in orange. And when you do that, you reduce the 6.95 to 5.628. So in this instance, you're actually lowering the levy, because you're leaving the 1.3 million on the table, because you're underneath, by removing that entire project, you fall underneath by 1.3, you fall underneath the 6.9 by 1.3.
Right, it lowers our exemption by this amount. The math lead you to that. It just lowers the exemption that we can take to this amount.
It also reduces the tax levy from 3.28 to 1.99. So that's the difference. And in this instance, we do not need capital reserves, because again, the amount that's being requested under the scope is underneath or below the 6.95, so there's no need to use capital reserves.
So that leads beautifully, Alita, to the next, to the next calculation in slide.
So when you put all this data in, and they also, you know, they have to, they compare it to the previous year. So the information on top in both scenarios, option one and option two, is what was reported last year, and in those instances, our capital, our tax levy, if you can see on the top, was 102,785,797 for the 23-24 school year in both scenarios, that number did not change. What is changing here is the exemption itself. So in option one, again, which represents a 3.28%, you'll notice the amount that is circled is the amount in dollars of what the levy limit is. It's the amount in dollars of what the levy limit is. So when you compare the circle in option one, and you compare what the difference is in percentages, you go from, to get from 1.2 to 1.02 to 106, that represents a 3.28% increase in the levy, and that amount is the amount, the maximum amount that you can raise, which is another $3.3 million. In option number two, the amount for the tax levy limit is slight, is lower. So now you're operating with a maximum MATL of 104 million, which is less than, of course, the 106 million that you had in the first option. So in that instance, that 104 represents 1.99% increase over 102,785, which is this year's tax levy.
Right, and they are driven, again, by the previous slide, by the calculations on the previous slide. So when you look at this, what's the dollar amount our budget associated with this levy? What's the difference? It's 1.3 million. And again, in order to make that up, because it's a difference of 1.3 million, it's money that has to be reduced by recurring expenses.
So this is just like a comparison, side-by-side table, to show you again how we get to the difference between the 1.99 and the 3.28. So that, the top red is what you saw circled on the previous slide. Again, the 3.28 represents 106, and the 1.99 represents 104, and the difference is 1.3. The only other difference with regard to revenue is, again, the amount that's being taken from capital reserve, which is also in red. In the 3.28 million scenario, 3.28% scenario, 7.5 million is being taken from the reserve in order to not exceed the 6.9 for the $14 million of work. And in 1.99, as I stated before, that money is not needed, because you're below the 6.9 by the 1.3.
And again, at the, at the last meeting, we showed correctly, actually, that under the 1.99 option, the reduction was approximately 1.1 million. That's true with the lower levy of 104.8 million. We still needed, though, another 1.1 because of the difference between the two levy amounts, so it compounded. The levy was now lowered in that third option, the other stayed 106, it got lowered to 104 and changed, the difference was 1.3 million. That 1.3 had to be added to the 1.1 to get to 1.99, right? So we thought this chart was more, we either had to add another column or another line to the other chart, or just revamp into a chart that was clearer. So again, the last time, there were three different options, three of the four had the same levy amount of 106, a reduction of 2.4 million roughly. There was one that had a levy amount of 1.4. You had to make up the difference between the 106 and the 104, of course, because money has to come from somewhere. And then you had an addition cut again by 1.1, once you were at the levy of 1.99%. You add the two amounts together, and that was the actual cut if that option was selected.
So in this, and a last thing to note, it's very clear that 8.856 represents the 1.3 and the 7.5, and that 8.5, both of those represent removing AMD, that's the cost of AMD HVAC work. So again, the 1.3 and the 7.5 in additional revenue is eliminated, as well as a project scope of 8.85, which equal each other. In this example, you'll notice, as I said many times before, until we settle upon a levy and a budget number, the budget is a moving target. So before, it was 2.4, but Paul went back and reduced the scope of the, not the scope, the cost of the driveway, so that's where the difference lies. He went in and I went in and reduced it in wind cap, so it was about $100,000 difference in the cost for the AMD driveway.
So again, going back to that, just for clarification, Alita, if you don't mind, the two differences that we would have to reduce in recurring expenses, they're identical, because again, we would have to have added to the 1.99, the difference between the two levy amounts, plus the additional funds it would take to get to the required 1.99. But the amounts are still the same, and again, the difference over here on this side is that it's missing the transfer of revenue from the capital line to do the AMD work.
So I'm going to have to grab the mic, because I cannot see.
Go for it.
I tried to, I did 11 by 17, this is how bad it is. So, so with this example, and I want to highlight that it clearly says for illustrative purposes only, we all understand as a process, related to the bond. However, it has been coming up consistently throughout the budget process, throughout the potential bond process and discussions. How does the bond and the budget impact one another, or do they at all? So what I tried to do here is basically take the information that was provided by our construction manager, Paul Tazi, and I basically just applied the years going forward based on a potential bond date, a bond vote date of September 2024. So if you look at the budget year for '24-'25, what's included in that is 17 million towards the, 17 million towards the locker room work. Also included in there is the 4.6 million for the AMD driveway. Also included in there is starting the work for the 78 building. Also included in '24-'25 school year, budget year, is the 8.8 million- Also included in '24, '25 school year budget year is the 8.8 million for the AMD HVAC work, and then Brookside costs of 12.3 million. So anything in red is basically associated with using the 6.95 transfer to capital line, as well as reserves. So when you get to the bottom of the '24, '25 fiscal year, you'll notice that the total is 74 million. Of that 74 million, 6.533 is coming from the capital reserves, which was represented on top. And then also the 6.95 is coming from the transfer to capital line. In the '26, the '25, '26 fiscal year, you'll note that project costs associated with OHS is $40 million. Project costs associated with AMD, again, using some of the, 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 the reserves in 2.4 million. And then also more work for AMD. And then at the bottom, we also have $16 million of work that's associated with Claremont. Again, anything in red represents using the, the, the reserves and also the transfer to capital line. So those numbers are at the bottom. In '25, '26, again, the amount would be 13.4. And '25, '26, it'll be 16.4. And then finally, in the year, fiscal year, '26, '27, 17 million would be used, 31 million would be used for AMD. And then we reach the end of the line related to the project scope, the project costs, the use of the reserves, because at that point, the reserves have been exhausted. And then also, in the following year, we start to pay back the bond costs. So that 6.9 goes away, and it pays for the cost of the bond. So when you take out that level of scope of work, not only do you reduce the scope of work, you reduce your interest costs, and obviously, you're going to reduce the cost of the bond. So at the bottom, you'll see the number of 204 million. You'll recall that it was at 256. I do want to note, there are two projects that are missing from this. One is the amount associated with doing work for tennis courts at AMD. You'll see that's crossed out. And then also, any work for Roosevelt is also not included. And again, the amount for AMD, for the tennis courts was about 9.5 billion, and that's excluded from this amount. So again, Roosevelt and AMD scope of work related to any fields or tennis courts is not included in the scope of work.
So again, we just put this together based on certain assumptions that belong 100% with the board. But it, I, it's important to illustrate what Alida did here, how the use of the capital line in the budget and the use of reserves can accomplish capital work and lower the long-term cost of a bond and bring it in, in time to have that capital line pay for the debt on the bond at a 204, which could be as close to zero as possible. The board will have to make a decision on the turf, the, the new field, the tennis courts, et cetera. That is your decision, absolutely. But this is just a model that can show what can happen through this.
So finally, we have been working with fiscal advisors for quite some time in developing a scope of work that would lead to almost a 0% impact tax, on the tax levy related to the bond itself. So you'll see in the last column, based on a scope of work of $204 million, that the impact over a five-year period is four cents per every $1,000 full value. So we know that we can work with that, and the goal would be to make that a zero. But this is certainly much different than what we were, we were looking at before. And then once again, this is still for just illustrative purposes only. Paul did not weigh in on any escalation related to the delay in the vote of the bond. So he would have to weigh in on, in on that. So again, this is just strictly for illustrative purposes only. There is an opportunity, there is a roadmap to get closer to zero when we start to structure the use of our transfer to capital line, as well as properly structure the use of capital reserves.
I think if the board remembers, and we can certainly bring up that chart again, if we need to, that there are other revenues in addition to the local levy. We are being, we are recommending to the board that we do for the first time, transfer in 3.2 million out of two reserves, the ERS and TRS reserves. We are recommending a fund balance of up of 5 million. It's something we're not happy about, but we're not alone throughout the region, given what's going on. We are also being a little bit more aggressive in terms of our estimates with sales tax revenue and interest income. So it's a comprehen, at, at that point though, it still will require a, you know, $2.3 million reduction in either scenario.
So with that, we can take questions?
That helpful, hopefully? Clearer?
Hello, hello? Do we have any questions from trustees? Annie?
You have probably already explained this, but I need you to explain it for me one more time so I can understand. So for example, the HVAC stuff that is paid for by capital reserves, which is money we already have, why is not doing it going to lower the levy if we already have the money? Is it because you use the levy to replenish the account, or?
Mic's not on?
No, we just eliminated that scope of work from the budget. So basically, the money would stay in reserves. That, that, the 7.5 would stay in reserves. And then by, because you don't have enough scope, then you reduce your, your 6.9 to 5.3. But the money doesn't go away, you just don't do the work for AMD.
Right. I guess I'm wondering, if we already have the money, then why does it lower the tax levy to not do the work if we already have the money?
Because again, it's not being included in the scope of work in the budget. So it's being, the, the question that was asked, what happens if we take the HVAC work out of the budget? And so what happens is, you lower the amount for using the capital reserve, the money you do have, and then you also reduce your 6.9 million to 5.3.
Right. Okay. So I think if it's helpful to look at it this way, the capital projects that are allowed for an exemption in your regular budget, like you have to spend money, not take from a reserve, are allowed as exemptions, such as, as you can see here, the lease, the leases for the energy performance contract, the lease for 400. You can deduct your debt that you're paying on a current bond. You can even deduct the line items in the budget, because they want you. The state really is saying, look, we want you to spend money, you already have a budget with these in, we're going to encourage you, incentivize you to do that. So you can take them out of the levy calculation and reset it at a higher number. They won't allow you to more or less double dip if you have income from a reserve. So if you think about it, they're going to turn around and say, hey, you've got money in the bank, why am I allowing you to, you know, go around that, that? They're basically saying, they're incentivizing you. Some places don't have reserves. Alida built it up, there were very little here when she first arrived. So if you don't have it, and you're trying to get these capital projects in your regular budget, and you can't afford a bond, the state is going to turn to you and say, you know what? We're going to allow you to pull those out of your tax cap calculation. We're going to incentivize you to do that work, because we want you to stay on top of your buildings. It's not fair. And so it's an exemption. But if you've got money in a reserve, and you want to transfer it in, they're not going to allow you to exempt that. That like, they're not going to allow you to exempt building aid. It's like a double dip.
So is my understanding correct, that if we kept the AMD and all the capital projects that are proposed in the budget, and we ended up with a tax levy of 3.28, we would still have to come up with 2.3 million approximately from our recurring expenses to remove in order to balance our budget? But if we wanted to get down to 1.299, for whatever philosophical reason, we'd have to come up with an additional 1.3 million to remove from recurring expenses for a total of 3.6 million that we, we would have to basically cut?
Correct.
Got it?
But just to be clear, the, with that scenario that Catherine just laid out, the AMD HVACs can stay in the cap?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct, because Rob, you're getting the revenue from that from a reserve. Right? That cost is offset by a revenue reserve. Don't you wonder, like, who sat up in Albany and thought about all this? But. And again, these calc's are straight from the state and the portal.
Do we have other questions, clarifications needed?
I have, I have a question that doesn't, you might, you're probably not going to know it off the top of your head, although maybe you will, you surprised me. In the bond-related paper, we're at 204, assuming that we do this, we incorporate this, like HVAC work and this stuff into our budget this year. And now there's nothing on that Roosevelt line. But we will want to do something with Roosevelt, and that's going to cost some amount of money. But if we don't really have a plan for what we want to do, how could we possibly know how much it would cost? My question is, how much would we have in reserves after this bond project? Like, will we still have a reserve? You used the word depleted, and does that mean zero? Like, what, what does that actually mean? Because I don't want us to be like, in a situation where we then have to raise tax, you know, a tax levy to raise money to do something with Roosevelt when we're all finished with the bond work.
So the first capital reserve was limited to 19 million. We, we filled that requirement. So once you hit the capital reserve, you can't go back and add money to the 19 million, that's it. That's all the voters approved in the first capital reserve. That was in 2017. And 2020 or '22, we established a second reserve for $50 million. So right now, in that reserve is $7 million. So even if we depleted the 19.7, which represents the amount as of June 30th of 2023 for both reserves, we can still continue to replenish up to 50 million in the second reserve. So we can do that as we go along. I think we can do 10 million per year. So what we do, the same way we built up the reserves in this instance, we would take any fund balance that we have above 4% and put it in the capital reserve. So between, you have up to another $43 million that you can add to the second capital reserve.
Okay. So basically, we can begin saving now, so that by the time we would be ready to make a decision or do some work, we would have something at least. Because I just don't want to run into a cliff where it's like, we've decided we want to do something with Roosevelt, and then we want to, you know, there are many things that we could do, right? I don't want to list them all out on the table, but that's going to cost something, right? Then we'll have some money to do that, because I don't want to get into a situation where we said, oh, we said the bond was going to be 0.2% or 0, whatever number we end up coming up with for the bond, and then when that's over, be like, oh, by the way, that wasn't really the full scope of the project, and now we need to do this, and now we need the money now. So I guess that was my question, and I'm hearing is that we should be able to sock away some amount of money. Of course, every budget season's different, so you're not going to know what, how much money we could have in it in five years. But we are, I just want, what I'm looking for here is reassurance that we're forward thinking in that way.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to know, it would be important for us to start to rebuild, especially before '27, '28, because what happens is, they evaluate the school district when we do a borrowing, and if they see that we're depleting our revenue and our reserves, it becomes a problem. Our interest costs go up and our rating goes down. So they do, they do look at that. I can show you the, the statements that they highlighted. So it would be very important for us to kind of limit doing anything outside of the capital and demonstrate that we're trying to bring it back up. But this plan just assumes that we're going to use everything that we have, but it doesn't prevent us from this year adding money to the $50 million bucket.
And it's a great question. So again, reiterating my comments about the board, the questions are great.
I'd like to ask questions, well, just for clarification. So can you go to the schedule where there is the, yeah, that's one. So I, I thought I heard this, and I just wanted to make sure I'm clear on this. Right now, with everything front-loaded that we talked about, that's for the projects that are being proposed, this is what you're looking at by way of the, a levy increase for five years? It's the four cents per thousand. But you're, but I understood there was also another sentence you said after that, and I just want to make sure I'm clear. It's actually, you can structure this differently, so that we would actually have a zero increase per thousand in those five years? Is that, is that correct in terms of what I heard?
So just to be clear, column number six represents a 0.17%, which the total is 0.81% for five years. So that results in column number seven, representing four cents per $1,000. The additional funds that we have to raise is in column number five. So you'll see in the first couple of years, it's 177, 337, 499, 664, and then in that last year, it levels off at 800. So once that 800 is established in the budget, then you don't increase it no further. So am I saying, is it possible for us to find a way to pay for the 177, the 337, and the 499, and the 664? I think it's possible.
Okay.
And I think, I think that's a goal. That's what the goal would be. I just don't, like, we would have to work with the construction managers to do that. And I'm, I worked with Paul for a very long time, and I think that we can achieve a goal closer, even closer to where we are right now.
Great.
So our goal would be to get?
Our goal would be, after we pass this budget, to work on the bond and get it as close to 0% levy as possible.
Correct.
And one other clarification question. On building aid, can you either clarify in today, or maybe in a subsequent meeting, building aid ratio, it fluctuates, it's not fixed? Is that correct?
The building aid ratio does fluctuate. It was, the reason why it fluctuated this, this school year is because it was related to COVID. It doesn't typically fluctuate that significantly, but it does fluctuate. So it went down slightly, we don't think it's going to go back down, but yes, it does fluctuate. And this is the amount that's represented here for building aid, and certainly, the fiscal advisors use the lower rate that we currently have.
So it, right now, it's that built fiscal, sorry, it's the building aid ratio that they know today, because that's all that's published to us. But then, in the future, that could be 71, 72 cents, whatever that might be, 70 cents, whatever. But that would change year on year, which would, in theory, would that affect the way that you would have to consider whether or not you have to raise a levy to, to recoup the monies that, let's just say they bring it down to 6, 0.66 as an example, hypothetical example, I made it up. If they bring it down to 0.66, then that leaves you a gap, right? In between building aid and what you're able to, to pay, which would mean that in the local share, that would go up? Is that a correct statement, or is that incorrect? Do you know what I'm saying? I can clarify.
I understand what you're saying, because, I understand what you're saying. I don't know the answer to that, because it's never happened since I've been here. That, again, this was the first year it went down by that amount. I'm not sure what the answer would be, but if we're telling the community that we're not increasing the levy, then certainly, we would have to find a way within the budget to accommodate the additional or the loss of aid.
Okay, gotcha. So that, that's how you cap it, because we've said this, we're going to do that, and it's going to include that, so there won't be, so that's what we're saying.
Or we can offset it with capital reserve.
Right. And then, can I ask one last, and I'll, I'll stop there? The, so in the, what you proposed in the slide prior, which had the different projects that were associated with it, are there, are there particular projects that, so I just want to clarify that locker room will definitely be there, right? The, yeah, okay, locker room will definitely be there. And then for everything else, are, is there an A proposal and a B proposal that would potentially be shown in a future, as we go forward? Or is that, is it just an A proposal?
That's your call.
Okay, so we're not there yet?
That's your call, that's not our call. We just put together this with a, a set of certain assumptions, right? To give you a forecast of the possibilities. And I think, Roger, again, going And I think, Roger, again, going back to your question that just made, the spirit of that, it's also an excellent question, because you're faced with that every single year, with the annual development of a budget. So in some years, where you have a positive variance, you can put more money into reserves to offset years where you have a negative in certain areas. So you do that right now in how you approach the budget every single year. It just so happened that building aid has always gone up, and it's based on ratios like poverty levels and property values and all kinds of interesting things. But it is the challenge of a Board of Education every single year to face that situation. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is my understanding correct with regard to the fluctuations in the state aid for building? Is that we really can generally expect to see something around the same number as when we start? And really, the only significant fluctuation that would result in less aid would have to be some kind of, like, major, I don't know, development and raising of entire communities and rebuilding with increased... substantial increase in the wealth of the property, something along those lines.
Correct. And that's what happened in this case. It was the impact of COVID on New York City property values, and it impacted the entire state. So that would be a major event.
Just not much for me tonight on bond, but just to just clarify, the AMD line that's in there now, if we put it in this year's budget, it will come out of the bond, right? And reduce it by 8... By...
8.8.
Right, 8.8. Okay.
It's a...
Right. So if we put it... We decide to keep it in this year, it comes out of this. And just to just confirm, this example, and right, the previous example we shared a few months ago, tabled it, was 2.56, and it had everything in. And then, for this example, it's 0.83 over five years. Just an example, hypothetical. And it took out... In order to do that, we took out the play areas. We took out Roosevelt. And there was nothing else taken out of that two-five... Of the previous example to get to this? Or is there anything else removed?
Well, if you recall, Roosevelt wasn't in the original example. So we switched it at the end in order to speed up the work here for AMD HVAC work. So Roosevelt was never really part of the bond conversations when we were at the 256 mark. But in this instance, where we are right now, Roosevelt project scope is excluded, and also the work for AMD, for the outside area, the tennis courts. And no, the driveways here.
The driveway... So the driveway is here?
The driveway is in the budget for '24, '25.
But it's not in the bond?
A portion of that amount is...
Right there.
There. So this and this were together. And now I just separated them, because this is going to be done in '24, '25.
If you remember, it addressed parking for what we needed now. And there is additional work that needs to happen.
Right. Okay, and then, so yes, this is just a hypothetical. And obviously, you just indicated in others, the board will discuss whether this is the thing, or it's back to the other thing, or there's more of a thing, or we want the play areas, we want something else in or out. So just want to make sure that that's just... Here's a hypothetical.
Do you want a choice on a referendum? Do you want an AMB? That is 100% your responsibility and right to make that decision.
And the only other part I've got, then, the point in this example, 0.83 divided over seven... Over five years, 0.17. Some years, 0.16, others, increase in the levy. But the debt service line also becomes a line, right, in the annual budget. That 0.83 does not pay for the debt, the interest on this, correct? It just covers the initial outlay. Is that correct? So every year going forward, as you've laid out there in the next slide after the one we just saw, is that for every year, for the 30 years, 20 years, we have to account for the 1168, the 1193? That needs to go in somewhere as a line in the annual operating budget to cover that interest.
So this is the interest... This is the total cost of the debt service. So you know it's 204, right? That's the scope. With the interest, it's 340. With the building aid, it goes down to 232. With the local share, remember, we have 6.95. So this is higher than 6.95. So that's why there's an impact. If this number was 6.95, there would be no impact. So because there's a number here, that's how much we have to come out to increase the levy. But the total... What happens is, when you see it in the budget book, you're going to see this number, the expense. You're not going to see the aid offset by it. You'll see the aid in a separate document the state aid runs, and you'll see this number, the building aid, right? And then this is the amount that we're actually paying for that is already embedded in the budget with the 6.95. And because this number is higher than the 6.95, that's why we have an impact up there. So we need to get this number down to 6.95, and there will be no impact.
Right. So what column here is the amount of interest on the $204 million?
It's the difference between this and this.
So you subtract the 341, 67, 682 minus 204...
Yes.
419. And that gives you the amount of interest the district has to pay on the bond.
Over a 30-year period.
Got it. Thank you.
Anything else from our trustees in terms of clarification questions? Okay, what do you need to know from us this evening in terms of where we stand?
Well, first of all, again, I really do... I mean this sincerely. The conversations have been great. It's been refining. Hopefully, this tonight was a little clearer in terms of the difference between the difference between the 3.28 and the 1.99, and how they impact, and what's an exemption and what's not. At the end of the day, it's a $2.3 million reduction in recurring expenses. If the board, going back to the board president's question, if you wanted to bring it down from 3.28, again, to 1.99, it's 1.3 additional. But HVAC stays in there. Or you could do gradations of that. As you just do the math, you'll see what that means. So again, we would just add that to the list of recurring expenses. If the board was looking at 299, it would be a $330,000 reduction in recurring expenses additional.
So you need us now to discuss, are we...
What else do you need?
The proposal of 3.28? Are we... Do we philosophically want to be at a different number? And I guess, is tonight the time to have that discussion?
Well, if you need more... You have to vote on it at the next meeting? Well, not the April 16th meeting. That's the BOSI's budget meeting. But again, we can have more conversation. But if the board needs any additional information, more clarity on the two choices, the two options, again, that would be the time to let us know.
Okay. And there is a resolution on our agenda tonight for the AMD AC work, and that transfer of those funds.
For it to go on the resolution for the voters to approve.
Got it.
Right.
And I'm sorry, April 4th, we are publishing...
The annual budget notice, which doesn't have the amount.
Which doesn't have the numbers.
Nobody talks about who's up for reelection, when the vote is going to be, et cetera.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. This has been very helpful. I know you guys have been working really hard to get us information, and really just to educate us on the process and to explain everything. You know, I feel good. I feel like I have enough information to make a decision. I'm going to certainly let my colleagues advise you if they need more information.
Right.
And then, I guess, I will ask trustees if you're ready to have a philosophical discussion tonight about this.
I think regardless of where we net out, I guess, from where do we get the recommendation from of what to reduce or cut? Who comes to us and says, okay, if you want to go here, here's my recommendation. If you want to go here, here's this plus that? What exactly are the items that are on the table? And when do we discuss that, I think, in order to make an informed decision?
Okay, so that would be my job. That would be my responsibility. And that's what you get when you're a superintendent of schools. So again, I've been here before. So let me... And thank you for the question, because it's important to talk about a philosophy behind that. First of all, I do want to say, there isn't one position here in Osning that isn't important, that isn't impactful. It's... You have an incredible staff. I get the privilege of calling them my staff right now. There are wonderful programs that exist here. What the question comes down to is about the level of impact that we need to address. So we will continue to... In addition to all of this, we'll continue to seek out new grants. We will continue to look at ones we have. Alita and the executive cabinet, we were thinking about Kim. Also, Maria, Jessica, and Dawn. You know, this grant has this position in it. Is it easier to move out of the general fund, another one into it, as opposed to something else? So we're doing that level of analysis, just to... Especially with the federal consolidated grants. So reducing recurring costs, here's the philosophy where we are behind it. Please keep in mind that this is an iterative process. First touch, second touch, third touch. So we're going to use the spirit, first of all, behind the extension of the federal stimulus money, grant-funded money of the 2.1 million. It wasn't meant to be ongoing. We all know that at the time I heard that discussed here at the board table. Some of the increases merged into the additional foundation aid we got last year, so now it's part of the general fund. However, if you keep the spirit of what that funding was meant to be for, it was meant to address learning loss in key areas. It wasn't ever intended to be permanent pieces of a school district budget. And we're not alone. If any newspaper you pick up, you'll see many school districts are in this boat. The next level that we're going to look at here is that, were some of those positions in the federal stimulus money, did they turn into mandated positions? If that's the case, then we can't go near those for a reduction. So we're going to go to the next level. We're going to try and maximize our retiree savings. We're looking at our resignations and retirements in all areas and see if they need to be replaced. There are some positions that are vacant in the budget, and we will be eliminating them as a recommendation. And we're going to look at our scheduling. Is there a more efficient and effective way of providing scheduling and program for kids? Is there an underutilization of an FTE? We're going to maintain, very important for everyone to hear, our favorable class size and our programs for students. But we're looking at very low-enrolled classes to see, you know, what do we do with those? Do you offer them on an alternating schedule? However, you have to keep in mind, remember, I was a scheduler. If a child needs that as a capstone class for graduation, you can't do that. We also looked at over $600,000 of recurring non-staffing expenses that have been eliminated. Jared needs two trucks. We're telling him, one this year, one next year. And just keep an eye on that, the second truck. We're looking at certain contracts that we're using under ARC. We're looking at many different areas for a reduction, and we came up with close to $600,000 there. So this is the hard level of work that we're doing right now. And I certainly think taking advantage of the spirit behind the stimulus money, taking a look at our retirements, taking a look at positions that, you know, do we need to fill them, certain vacancies, moving some into the federal stimulus money when we look to decrease them. And we're looking for staffing efficiencies through all of this. It's hard work. No one will be happy. I just say that in all honesty. But I've been there before. And it will be looked at with one core focus. What is the impact on kids? That's where it will fall, right?
And we're, as you said, we're not alone in this. This seems to be a statewide issue.
Right, right. It's most unfortunate that the cost drivers this year were super high. And there are places, as you've read in the paper, that are looking to make up over $80 million. Other places are cutting a lot more. It's just the confluence of loss of federal stimulus money and increase of cost drivers.
If we were to hypothetically do the 1.99% and keep the HVAC, what would you look at next for cutting? Would it be increased class sizes?
Yes.
Oh, okay. There you go.
You'd have to. You'd have to.
What would an increase in class size look like?
Well, it depends whether it's K1, 2. The contract actually outlines, the board has a policy on all of that, too. So you see different layers as to what that means. You know, you're looking at, in extreme areas, you're looking at AMD. It's a nine-period day. Do you flip it to an eight-period day? Is there another way of scheduling the high school that is more efficient? These are complicated conversations. We're certainly prepared to have them and do them. But if we went to that next level to get another 1.3 million, we would be looking at upping class size and really making significant change. That's a lot of money. That's 13 positions right there. And what I'm saying, too, it's across the board in all bargaining units. I'm not saying that one is any different than the other.
So that's the level where we really start to very directly impact the kids?
Yes, correct.
Is my understanding, and without getting into anywhere close to any sort of negotiation, but our contracts with our various bargaining units have us at baseline at increases in salaries at over 2% each year? Is that approximately correct?
Well, that's... First of all, they were all collectively bargained and bargained in good faith and underneath the Taylor law. And as you go through collective bargaining, there are gives and takes on things. And I think the board and the... Let's take the OTA, for example. I think the board and the teachers' association agreed to increases in health insurance, and then also did a flattening or smoothing, if you will, of the step schedule to about 2%. So that... You have that. And then you have on the table, like every other public school district, what is the annual increase you put on that step schedule, which can anywhere between, you know, 1.5 to 2%, depending upon where people negotiated them.
Okay.
Right? And the same would occur CSEA. The same occurs with the administrators' association, your AIDS association. If you go back to my slide with the numbers, there are a lot of individuals in those groups, right?
What would have to happen? Because I know we talked about NYSIP last year.
Yeah.
There were some... There's challenges, I get it, right? And they're not just hitting Osning. They're hitting everybody, municipalities, whether you're a local government or a school district. And they're hitting everybody pretty hard. Is there such a thing as, you know, just looking outside of NYSIP in other places? I know that there are some challenges with, I think, like, some of the areas that we looked at. Are there other ways that we could look at this potentially to get... So this way, everybody keeps their benefits, but at the same time, we get... Is there some other better alternative and option out there? And I know this isn't going to help us this year, but next year, right?
It would have to stay on our agenda. I will tell you, five years ago, when I was in another district, it was a conversation. A much smaller place. We had to come up with a buy-in of over $1 million just to go into it. At a recent meeting that I was attending, we're looking at anywhere between $5 and $10 million to buy into some of these. Some are in taking new members. But you have to keep at this. I mean, we're in the education business. We're not in the health insurance business. But we have a health insurance problem in New York State on many levels, or even in the country. That's my editorial, sorry. But clearly, if... Why weren't there certain health, you know, insurance accounts that will allow flexibility, let's say, around deductibles? That's another way to approach it. So there are some industry-level approaches that I wish the industry could really look at for this. But to your question, yes, it's ongoing work that we have to look at.
Yeah, I mean, I was just thinking in terms of, like... Yeah, I mean, I was just thinking in terms of, like, other carriers that could be outside of, like, Niship. And I don't know what the laws are around this, et cetera. But, you know, if, let's just say, if I'm a teacher, I'm working here, I love the benefits I've got, but my benefit costs have gone up, you know, 20%.
Right.
And could the district in the future look at companies like Cigna and whatever else that might be out there?
You can. You have to obviously negotiate that.
Yeah.
But part of the other piece of that, right now, the way the portals look at, is that, you know, an insurance company, because that's what they are, they'll look at your liabilities. And clearly, the records as to what the liabilities are. And it's sad to say, because people's health, some people have had really devastating illnesses. But that's a piece of data that is now available through all portal that another insurance carrier will look at. But it's a great question.
And just building off of that, is that, not to look at next year's, but is that really a next year and beyond? Like, is there anything we could do to address the highest cost drivers, as Rogers, you know, talking about, you're talking about, for this budget cycle? Or the reality is, we're going to look at it down the road?
Look at it continuously. I will say, you are addressing, because you're lucky to have them, thank you, Alida, and ERS and TRS reserve. So you use those reserves for a rainy day fund. Well, right now, it's raining. And here in Osning, we're able to use those funds to offset that increase for this year, to the tune of $3.2 million. Here's hoping the increase isn't that big next year. But because it's not an ongoing and continuous expense, we just need the increase above what's in the regular budget. So Rob, to your point, it's actually happening with us in this year's budget develop, using two reserves that we have. Right?
But the ability to get into a new plan, that's not going to be a 2020.
Oh, I guarantee you, we will be, no, it won't be for this. But I guarantee you, I know the superintendent's groups, I'm pretty sure Alida's groups, were being lobbied by different vendors and outside people. So we'll see what the conversations lend. Yeah.
I mean, we've taken two historic hits in health insurance increase.
Two.
I just want to clarify this. Last year, when we got that big foundation increase, $5 million of it went to healthcare. That was a punch in the gut. This year, it's almost $3 million. So if you look at, like, an increase in foundation aid, we went year to year, what, $9 million in one year. Health insurance has just absorbed the foundation aid for us. And so that's really like, so will you
That's a great perspective, Frank.
Will you continue to see these kinds of increases? That's the work that, why we advocate and lobby and go and try to really push. I think, you know, the district from Alida can give the whole history of when we were self-insured, when we wanted to go into local consortiums, you know, as Mary was saying, with the individual plans, they're taking you on as individual risks, whatever your history is. If you come in with some cases, and we had those cases, and when we, our self, basically, our self-insurance went through the roof. And the only place we could really land at that time was Niship.
Right, because it's a big
Niship saved us a lot of money at the time.
Right.
Would now, going into a consortium, another one, first, you have two acts, you've got to negotiate it all locally. There's work to do there. That's not fast typically. And then, basically, you also have to get them to accept you.
Right.
So I think realistically, if you really aggressively pursue it, and you're able to find the right marriage of things, you're looking at an 18-month thing, unless you really have, unless you're coming up with a doomsday budget where you're telling people we're going to be cutting 50 positions if we don't do this.
Right.
And nobody wants to have that conversation. But I think that's where we've been, and Alida's done great work in making sure we're not back in those positions. And so we're taking an enormous hit. And we're still talking about reductions, which is horrible, right? I mean, we know we have, you know, our enrollment hasn't really dropped. It's been there. And we knew we were under-resourced, and so we're there. So we're not able to maintain what we wanted to. I get some of the funds that we were using was short-term funds for learning loss, and we're trying to make the best of it. But the reality of it is, we had those after-school programs before the state aid cuts happened. We'd just gotten them back. And now we're going back away from them.
Right.
So, you know, pursuing grants, I encourage all of you to get in legislators' offices. And I urge you to go to Albany and to pursue grants, because it makes a difference. We got additional pre-K funds. We got additional foundation aid. We got all these things, some which involve the community, but a lot which involved the board was going and fighting. So if you don't want to be in this position again next year, I think you've got to talk about what your agenda is for the next 12 months.
Right.
But I just keep in mind, these are historic hits on the healthcare side.
Historic. $8 million in two years. Unbelievable. And that begs, you know, what's the advocacy placed on Niship itself to right its ship internally?
And there was advocacy because there were rates that were even going to be higher this year. And there was, you know, some of this is driven by numbers and COVID health. And some of this is lobbyists and carriers pushing on the state to change their rates. And there was advocacy done to dampen the blow mid-year this year, because we would have been hit harder with insurance costs, because municipal government's on the 12-year thing, we're on the six-year. So you've got to be in the game if you don't want to get these hits. But we do need to pursue looking at other healthcare options if we can get the right circumstances there, is my opinion.
I do want to say philosophically, I support the recommendation of the 3.28. I think especially when you combine that, I mean, when you consider that, that we, you know, there were many of us that were looking uncomfortable with the 3.95. I'm comfortable with the 3.28, and especially so if we can combine this with the goal of getting the bond to 0%. I think it puts us in a really good position with doing some facilities projects now that are not dependent on the bond being improved, that will improve the quality of education for our children and our educators. And it is also taking into account the fact that we have had these historic rises in our insurance costs for two years in a row. And I think going less than that right now, when we're on this trend, feels shortsighted to me. So that's more on that.
Just first, just want to appreciate the position that you and the administration, these are not easy decisions, totally understand that, or recommendations, totally understand that. And that you're trying to do everything from a line item from this budget book to not impact instruction and associated positions. But in, again, first year here, but will you facilitate, back to the board, okay, this line item was this, I suggested this.
Yes, we'll see that.
We'll be able to see that, so literally line by line, and how you're getting that, the amount of the reductions for, I guess, certainly, you know, the both levy?
Yeah. I mean, they come holistically as a recommendation with input from everyone. Everyone kind of, you know, like, I don't operate in the way I'll tell, like, I don't, we're in AMD to tell Nicole Nova, you know, what she needs to cut. I would ask her team to come up with a list of prioritized items. Again, putting it through a thoughtful process, just as we did with Jared and others. So it needs to go through that thoughtful process, right? It has to.
Mary, thanks so much for, you know, for all this, really. I think you've kind of gone into places we've asked you to go to, and then some, right? But I think, I'm not going to say one number or another number just yet. What I want to do is, in terms of looking at this, I know you're going to come back with more facts on this. So I'm trusting the fact that you guys are doing your best to kind of keep this conversation fluid. So I'm just going to say, I know this is a, at least from the point of where we are today, I think that, you know, I just want to make sure, if you say to me, hey, you know what, this is the net impact on students, that's going to sway my decision, right? I don't want students being impacted. But I need to know, what does that mean? What's that look like? I don't, you know, because there's livelihoods that are involved in here, there are students that are involved in here, there's lots of things involved in here.
You take that very, very, very seriously. That's why our recommendation is the 3.28. But that's just our recommendation. That's not our job. I promise you, we will do our best with whatever funds the Board of Education decides is appropriate.
Yep.
But at the end of the day, that one is our recommendation for all the reasons, including the higher levy set for the moving forward.
Right. And just for, I know you probably said this in many different ways, just to get it in my thick head here. The 3.29 will not be painful to the students.
Well, I can't say that, because like, you know, something, let's put it this way. You could have a class that might have four kids in it, and a student might absolutely love it. Or you could have, for example, you know, all of a sudden now, if I'm looking at, let's say, just, you know, someone who works in support of students, and now their case load might be a little higher, and kids will have to wait. So every single one of these, Osning did not make a decision to add these positions because they thought they wouldn't have a strong impact with kids. However, at the end of the day, you know, when you look at things, whether or not you're doing a resource room, or you're, I'm sorry, you're providing resources, let's say, to a new instructional initiatives. Once you get moving on that, do you still need training wheels in some areas of that? So, and that's a balcony conversation, because I don't, I know there, we have a lot of teachers watching tonight, and administrators and others. So again, taking a look at things like that from a balcony view and a viewpoint. But no one here was hired with the intention of not having a role that would be important and impactful to the core mission. No one would have done that. Ray wouldn't have pointed, wouldn't have recommended, and no one would have hired.
I appreciate that. And I'll just say, I think there's probably more information coming. And, you know, I mean, you've got to publish what you got to publish, right? And I think the conversation will keep going.
Okay. Thank you.
My concern, my, yeah, my concern is the impact on the students and the services they receive. And having gone through the market crash and being here when we took the knife to programs and positions and seeing what the outcomes of that, we saw our reading scores drop double digits in one year after our after-school programs and additional supports were significantly reduced. I'll wait to see more of the information that comes, but it feels to me like, I don't know how we pull that out at the 3.28. And I get the financial realities of the tax cap, and we're not a community that's going to go for an override. But a lot of other communities would have to go for an override before we would.
Correct, correct.
And, you know, it pains me to think we're going to be making cuts in those areas likely, and we just aren't able to fund it.
Correct.
I guess, I guess, I guess, you know, philosophically, I think, you know, I would be interested in supporting more than the 3.28. But the reality of it is the 3.28
That's the cap.
Is the cap. And my head is there to prevent more hemorrhaging, I guess, unless you can come up with some miracle way to show us a number that's lower, that basically doesn't hit those areas. I don't see how I wouldn't support the 3.28.
Right. Well stated, the sentiment of us, exactly. I think, you know, going through it, that is the cap. That's what it is. It would require an override. 6.2 is what's needed to do this year, next year. And that needs an override. But again, you know, you've got research-based approaches towards many things. Hopefully, that addresses what we're set out to do, addresses the goals for those things. And I know you've got some very, very, very hard-working teachers and teaching assistants and aides and administrators who are doing their best. But again, the reality of the situation, it just comes down to the math. It's important to reiterate again, Alida, correct me if I'm wrong, but we are being aggressive with the use of revenues. We have, you know, you're pulling from reserves that we haven't done before. We did a look at, you know, how we looked at custodians and a different approach to that. We are looking at more fund balance. So we're being aggressive with the revenues that we have, just so that the impact is at 2.3. I was even thrilled when Alida Paul came back and tweaked it again. Of course, I did see the nicer increase of $70,000. So I felt like whack-a-mole, you know, one here and one came up there. But again, see, that 2.3 is lower than what we thought, and because of Paul's work. But again, it would be higher if you weren't, I mean, and that's our recommendation to you. The board could turn around and say, we don't want to use that level of reserves to help offset. But that's, that's part of the plan that we presented for your approval. And trust me, I know the four individuals, my executive cabinet, if there was another line item and another grant, they'll come running into my, everyone is in that mode right now. Everybody, everybody.
So I'll just go quickly. I'm still preferred at the 1.99. Call it two. I'd like to see what that looks like. Going to my previous question, what that means to go from the 3.28, and the 1.9, the additional 1.3 million in the reduction. What does that look like? You know, last year, the board did nice work to try to, we were at, it was, this board was at zero last year, correct, for levy? And just, I want to see the data, the facts here, what that means to go from a zero to a 3.28 year over year seems very high for the community, especially with this bond looming. And I would encourage, I know we've had discussions around calculators and things, but I would encourage the community to look at, if there's two proposals in theory on the table, maybe others come up, the 3.28 and the 1.99, what that means as your outlier, what that's going to hit your pocket in both scenarios. And then, I guess, we can get feedback from the community between now and when we have to vote on this thing, to see if that difference works for the community and those additional outlays at both. But I'm still, philosophically, I guess, it may not be philosophically, but I'm still at that 1.99. But I'd like to see what that actually looks like on paper.
I don't know. Anyway, can you hear me? Is my mic on? It doesn't feel like it is.
No.
Thank you. I just want to express my thoughts, I guess, at this point. We've been talking about how we feel philosophically about these numbers. It's painful. Mary, you said nobody's going to be happy. I'm not happy, you know? How can I be happy if we have to find money by cutting positions? And I think it's disingenuous to say, you know, we don't want this to impact the children. Every position you cut is going to impact children, because every staff member we have has a positive impact on our students.
Correct.
And I think that that's what makes this so painful. I am feeling like 3.28 is where we need to be in order to mitigate the damage that will be happening, no matter how you slice it. And it just, it doesn't feel good to be in a position where even, I think, the most responsible budget we can put forward is going to detrimentally impact the students in our school district. I think at 1.99, especially if we prioritize our HVAC system, I think the amount of cutting that we would need to do to our recurring costs would be unconscionable to me. It would not be preferable. I mean, I agree. Nobody loves an increase in their taxes, right? I had been of the mindset last year that, you know, that at some point, a 0% tax levy increase is not sustainable. That's not like a long-term plan. And that I expected to be able to have to increase taxes. It just, it really stinks to have kind of all these, this confluence of these impacts hitting us in such a way that even if we do raise the tax levy to the acceptable limit, that we're still in a position where we need to make sacrifices. But I think in order to mitigate those sacrifices, the responsible thing to do for our students is, and long-term, right, for our, our financial security. I think the fiscally responsible thing to do is also the 3.28%. That's where I'm leaning. I am curious to see what specifically we'll need to go in order to make that possible. I know we don't have that yet, right? Like, that's going to be a work in progress. At the end of the day, I'm not going to be happy with whatever's on my list, because I believe truly that every single person that we have who works here, that works with our students makes a positive impact to them. So I guess that's all I have to say. That's where I'm at right now.
I do need to remind the board when we showed the enrollment totals, so furthermore restricted, we did, you know, and I, I hear that the Great Regeneron Contest has upped interest in houses in Osning. But we had an increase of enrollment of about 130 kids. interest in houses in Austin, but we had an increase of enrollment of about 130 kids. So I need flexibility to address that. It's important that we keep that in mind. And I'm sitting here looking at Kim, when we have programs for students with special needs, they come with special needs and it's, you know, we need flexibility for that. If you don't use it one year, it goes into fund balance and you support it, but the years that you do need it. So we do need to keep in mind flexibility for some of our most vulnerable students and the fact that we are fortunate to have an increase in enrollment.
Anything else? Annie, Melissa? Any parting thoughts?
Mike?
Thank you. As I think we're all acknowledged to some extent of a serious situation we're in. I think, you know, despite some of the things we were able to do in the past with our budget, with kind of balancing internal needs and also community needs, I think with the discussion around the health insurance, that's really kind of the elephant in the room that's making a lot of, a lot of this difficult. And I think, just in a nutshell, I'm, I'm in support of the recommendation, given that that's already putting a lot of limitations on us. It sounds like, even though you haven't, you've gone into itemized detail, that anything less than that will result in things such as increased class sizes. And I'm thinking about how something like that can just compound school climate in already overcrowded buildings, right? So the building's overcrowded, now, you know, the class sizes are increasing. So I'm just thinking about all of that. I don't think this is, you know, we're not in the most optimal position, which is not unique to us as a school district, unfortunately, this year. But I am in support of the recommendation. I think a lot of meticulous thought and care and concern went into trying to deliver us that recommendation and I trust that it was done trying to balance the needs of the school community and the broader community as best as we can.
Last year, I was on the other side of the board discussion and at that point, I didn't understand why you wouldn't have a 0% levy with all the money that we were getting from foundation aid. And to Frank's point, 5 million of that was taken up by health insurance. So while I can see how that worked last year and was probably still a bit of a challenge with the high health insurance costs, this year, I don't know how we can go below the 3.28 recommendation and still provide a decent education for our kids. It seems like we will already be having to cut some stuff that kind of sets Austin apart in what the kids get to participate in and explore in terms of classes. You mentioned that there might be a class with four kids in it. I'm sure that exists, maybe multiple. And those are just really great opportunities for them. So it's going to be sad to see some of those go. And then beyond that, I, I think that this past year showed us we really need to update the HVAC and it was severely impacting learning. I know parents who kept their children home, parents were doing the best that they could by bringing in fans and teachers were doing their best and it was really something very important to the community that we update quickly. I am empathetic to taxpayers. I am a taxpayer and I know how hard it is. And at the same time, it's just so important that our kids have a good education. So thank you for all the work you're doing, trying to get down to what our initial proposal was. And I support it at this point.
Okay, thank you. More to come. And we appreciate the hard work of everyone behind the scenes and I appreciate the care and diligence that I've seen from all the trustees in analyzing this during this budget season. It is our number one job. It is always difficult work. There are always new and unusual issues to consider. There are always compromises and the art of a good negotiation, if, if everybody leaves a little bit unhappy. And that's probably where we're at. So more to come. And I will take a look at our agenda. Hang on. Now move on to the public comment section, which is public comment number one, 4.1. And this is on any item on tonight's agenda. There'll be a second public comment at the end of the meeting, which is on any education-related topic. Anyone in the audience like to make a statement? No one's rushing up to the microphone, so I will ask our clerk if there is anyone online who is raising their digital hand, who would like to be heard. Okay, no online comments. I'll now continue on to the consent agenda, business of the board section. I'm going to break out number 5.2 and I have something I have to read. Hang on. Okay, I'll take a motion for 5.2. So moved.
Second.
5.2, resolution to authorize a proposition for expenditures from the 2017 Capital Reserve. The recommended motion will be asking if the Board of Education will expend an amount not to exceed $7,533,666 from the Capital Reserve Fund, known as the Facilities Improvement Program 2017, to expand air conditioning to all classrooms and other instructional spaces of Ann and Dora Middle School, which will include retrofitting new piping, coils, controls, and electrical infrastructure, and pay any related or associated costs of each of these projects, including but not limited to the professional services for each of these projects. Any discussion about this agenda item and proposition?
So clarifying question, if this passes, does this essentially mean we're, we want it in the 2024, 25 budget? Or is this like, we're spending the capital and we could use it anytime? Or essentially with this, are we saying, yep, this is what we want to do next year as part of this budget?
This is, and Alita will tell me, that this is a proposition that we would agree, that this would go on the ballot in this May's vote on May 21st. So if we agree to this, for example, tonight, Alita, and then we have a change of heart before May 21st, what are our options?
So you, so you have to put something up because it's a requirement to provide notice. However, right before the bond, I mean, the budget vote or the budget adoption by the board, if you didn't want to do it, you don't have to, but you have to do something today.
Got it.
And, and you can't, you cannot use it for a different purpose, once you outline it for the work that's being required, because if you recall, you did approve the seeker for this work and you have to get a seeker approval before you can put it on as part of the bond, the budget vote.
Okay. Similar but related question. The driveway project, would that also need to be a proposition?
No, it's in the budget. However, the seeker is coming for that.
Understood. Okay. Any further discussion, questions, clarifications? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Okay, motion carries.
Really, I don't have to say anything fancy for 5.3? Okay, thank you.
I'll take a motion for 5.3.
So moved.
Second.
5.3, resolution calling for notice of the annual district budget vote and Board of Education election. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. I will take a motion for 5.4 through... 5.8.
So moved.
Second.
5.4, resolution to approve an agreement with employee 05687. 5.5, resolution to approve an agreement with employee 05715. 5.6, resolution to approve an agreement with employee 05871. 5.7, resolution to appoint additional consultants for the 2023, 2024 school year. 5.8, resolution to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 28th, 2024. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'll take a motion for 6.1.
So moved. Second.
6.1, resolution to approve recommended placements. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. I will take a motion for seven, well, is there anything from section seven that folks would like me to break out? I'll take a motion for 7.1 through 7.5.
So moved.
Second.
7.1, resolution to accept management's response letter to the external audit report in the year ending June 30th, 2023. 7.2, resolution to accept management's response letter to the internal risk assessment in the year ending June 30th, 2023. 7.3, resolution to accept management's response letter to the internal risk assessment of information technology in the year ending June 30th, 2023. 7.4, resolution to reduce the tax tertiary reserve. 7.5, resolution to establish the 2023, 2024 tax tertiary reserve. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Section eight, is there anything anyone would like me to break out? I'll take a motion for section 8.1 through... I'm getting there. 8.14.
So moved.
Second.
8.1, resolution regarding professional staff resignations. 8.2, resolution regarding civil service staff resignations. 8.3, resolution regarding professional staff appointments. 8.4, resolution regarding confidential staff appointments. 8.5, resolution regarding support staff appointments. 8.6, resolution regarding bus attendant appointments. 8.7, resolution regarding professional staff appointments before and after school programs. 8.8, resolution regarding civil service staff appointments before and after school programs. 8.9, resolution regarding support staff appointments before and after school programs. 8.10, resolution regarding professional staff appointments, summer school programs. 8.11, resolution regarding support staff appointments, summer school programs. 8.12, resolution regarding DM substitute appointments. 8.13, resolution regarding approval of school volunteers. 8.14, resolution regarding support staff request for leave of absence. Any discussion?
Just like to thank Thomas Peters for his 24 years of service to the school districts.
Well, round of applause. And thank you to our school volunteers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. I will take a motion for 9.1.
So moved.
Second.
9.1, resolution to adopt policy 1250, annual district election and budget vote. It's a second reading. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. I'll take a motion for 9.2.
So moved. Second.
9.2, resolution to adopt policy 5220, school-sponsored student expression as a second reading. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Okay, we have our second audience recognition section. This can be recognition and comment on any education-related item here in Austin. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment? No one raising their hand. Is there anyone virtually who would like to raise their digital hand to make a virtual comment? Okay, no public comments this evening. I'm going to now turn it over to board reports and dialogue. Is there anything anyone would like to report out about? Really?
We haven't had any committee meetings.
There hasn't been any, anything new. I could just give you an update on, on like First Robotics, if you want to hear about that.
I have, wait, a dialogue.
Oh, you have a dialogue? Okay. No, like, this is good. It's early, dialogue items, but, wait, let Roger do this. We'll report and then we'll do your dialogue.
Sure. So really great to see the, our OHS students coming together again for their competition up in Albany. They were, they, you know, worked very hard together. And again, what's great about this is you have freshmen through, through seniors that are there. They worked hard together, essentially doing their part. And it was great seeing them run around as part of what they've been doing to help other teams and especially if they're rookie teams, also talking about what they do as far as inclusivity and bringing other students in and going out and recruiting, what the students have, have really like come together to learn how to take failure, particularly when your machines start to fall apart in, in some of these competitions, and being able to learn how to make that work, especially trying to problem solve in real time, which honestly, that, it's just amazing to see that. So the, the kids will be competing again in New York, if anybody wants to go. It is, it's during spring break, unfortunately, but, you know, that's when the competition is, but it is next Friday, not, not this coming Friday, Saturday, Sunday, it is the following Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And it's going to be a pretty action-packed, but probably their last chance to be able to try to qualify for the First Robotics World Competition. So lots of great mentors, parents, family that's there to help and support and really hats off to all the students who really make this happen.
Okay, thank you, Roger. Thank you to all our students, families, staff involved in that and all of the other wonderful initiatives that we have going on. Dialogue is away, Christine.
Okay. Well, I just, this just has come to me because Frank had brought up, you know, when we were discussing about the budget, advocacy as far as specifically health insurance goes. Frank, you and I are the only members of the legislative committee. If you would like to meet, to look at that, to potentially put together something to, you know, Westchester-Putnam, you know, to put it on the legislative agenda, if you want to work on something like that together so that we can discuss it as a board in preparation for doing something for the fall, I would be open to that if the rest of the board would like us to do that work.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need a little bit of guidance from the administration, right? Because, you know, everybody will jump on, we want you to reduce healthcare costs across the state, you'll pass resolutions, every board will pass them, you know? I, I think tactically, we're in a different position in terms of, we were trying to figure out sort of what are the things that we need. We're unique and we're unique amongst a lot of districts in that we're in night shift. So I think part of your advocacy is, is really targeted towards night shift and sort of some of the decisions around that. And you won't have a wide tent of people to work with you on that. So I think that that's a little bit of the challenge is, you know, I think we may want to ask administration and Mary in terms of just, what is it that would help from changes within night shift? And then maybe it's a meeting with some of the staff in Albany around night shift kind of at the end of the day to talk about, you know, ways and let them know the pain that we're seeing and, you know, bring it out. I don't know that you're going to get, I guess my, my two senses on it is go to a West Putt meeting, you're going to say, you're in night shift and everybody's going to look the other way and say, we're in the consortium, we're in this, yeah, we want healthcare reduced. And so it's just, I don't know, it's an effective use of your time, to be honest. Like, now, if we're able to get into the consortium, then that may make sense to do, you know? But I think, I think we probably need to target our effort a little more on what the local leaders.
I would certainly support this committee being at least meeting and it doesn't have to necessarily be that-ish particular issue. It could be you guys coming together, brainstorming, involving someone from admin to help you. I mean, there, the initiatives that are on the annual legislative list are just so broad. And I know we in Austin have some that we, we might... And I know we in Austining have some that we, we might wanna propose ourselves. So I would certainly support, it, it doesn't have to be that particular issue. It could even be, you know, if you're going to put down certain state mandates or you need to fund these previous state mandates that you've made. But I'd certainly support the committee coming, brainstorming and coming with a recommendation to the board of like, here, here are some things that might make sense to prioritize. If that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I feel like this would be kind of, you know, May-June might be the time of year to do that so that, cuz I don't know when you have, we have to, you probably know, when we have to, would submit anything that we would want to do.
Yeah, it's probably more than we should spend on tonight. I mean, we gave a meeting to talk about how to organize it, right? But, yeah, there's a timeline, May-June's not the timeline to go to Albany in my mind unless you're trying to do something for the end of session, right? And really, when it's budget stuff, you wanna do that in the fall, so you wanna prep for that in the, in the summertime and be ready to hit the ground in the fall.
Yeah, I guess my-
I, I mean, I think one of the things would be like funding for after-school programs, like, you know, you know, that's, that's a big thing that the state was able to kind of peel back when the federal funds were there. And now that those are going away, you know, trying to get them to push and prioritize some of that and making grants available. But I, I think, yeah, you wanna talk about timeline, what you're gonna do, when you're gonna do it. I think if it's budget stuff, you should look to do that in the fall and so prep now, you know, between now and, and summertime would be good to kind of come up with that.
Okay, well, yeah, that's what I'm really asking is, do we wanna, do we, as a board, want you and I to do some of that so that we can be prepared with something for the fall?
My question will be to the board, who's gonna go to Albany and who's gonna make the runs and who's gonna knock on the doors? Like, I spent a lot of time, I mean, I can tell you the number of trips I've made to Albany knocking on doors. So I think if the board's interested in doing that, it totally makes sense to come up with an agenda. If the board isn't gonna have time going out with a bond and other things, then maybe you just kind of, we result in sort of a letter-writing campaign. But effective-wise, I think you gotta be there knocking on doors.
I mean, I don't think I can make a decision on that if I don't know what we're talking about. And I think I could, the step one is to meet and brainstorm and say, hey, what are the initiatives we're gonna propose? I think it also makes sense to have another person on this committee. Um, probably makes sense at the reorg meeting at the end of the summer, um, to try to add a third person. So I guess, you know, I, I'll let you guys to decide when it's best to get together, but I certainly have my support to do it.
Yeah, no, I, I'm happy to meet, but there is a due action afterwards. And all I'm saying is if there's not an appetite to go to Albany, then, then I would, I would just go back what this committee does, right? But if there is an appetite to do it, I think there's a lot of things that we just mentioned too tonight. Night shift, after-school programs, two easy things to go up there and develop a list of agenda and actions and we'll have data on the impact from this budget cycle, what it did to those, you know, those programs, right? So we can certainly meet and put that proposal out and put a little bit of time into it. And if people are willing to pick up the torch and run, then I think it's worth doing.
Right, well, I guess my, my ask is not just to Frank, but to the whole board, is that work that you're interested in seeing happen? Because if the board doesn't want us to do that, then-
I, I would support it, yeah.
I'm interested and I would need to be heavily coached in how to knock on doors and talk to people. But, um, if I could make the childcare happen, I would go.
I think it's also the kind of thing that, um, I know we've had individual board members bring up things with, with regards to legislation and/or advocacy. One being the Safe Gun Act, the other being the bus stop cameras, right? And, um, so like, there are other initiatives that, even the stoplight, right? There are other initiatives that can be more local-focused, um, as well as going up to Albany. So I think, I think there is room to be more effective in this space.
Um, e- even if it just means like some of this stuff, you know, if we wanna talk about, you know, bus, uh, school bus stop sign cameras, that is something we can do through West Putt Legislative. You know, like, there's some of this stuff is gonna have different avenues, right?
Yeah, it's not an either-or, it's a both-and.
Yeah.
I would like to add, just for aside, that the board resolution about the smart light, it actually worked.
Oh, good.
The New York State Department of Transportation came and changed the light, uh, to, from twenty-nine seconds to forty-three seconds and shortened the light on Route Nine. And if you ask some teacher, they're like, what happened? Uh, they're more left, got-
Mary, anecdotally, you know, cuz you know I live in this neighborhood, I came home, I usually just avoid leaving the house at like dismissal times in the afternoon because you don't wanna wait ten minutes to leave your neighborhood, right? But I was coming home at two fifty-five, which is typically a very terrible time to drive on the street because it's ten minutes after AMD lets out. And I usually have to wait because cars will block the street and then I block up the traffic behind me trying to take a left off of Van Cortlandt. And there was no, there was nothing. There was no traffic at two fifty-five, which means-
It worked.
People are leaving in under ten minutes at, at, so it did. Like, I, you had said like, they changed it and I was like, I'll see about that, I'll know. And, um, I, I did note, I immediately did notice the difference.
You know, I mean, the kind of thing to put a press release out so that people know, you know, the, the board and administration worked together to pass a resolution and the state responded. Cuz the state not acting that fast is something we wanna acknowledge for them. And I think we should put a thank you letter together to them saying thank you for your sexy, for your quick action on this. It's made a big difference in our district, right?
I, I wanted to just also ask you, where, I can't remember for life, I don't know why, but where did we land with the resolution for the, um, school bus camera?
Just put an update in your pocket.
Okay. All right, sorry, sorry. Okay.
I have a question about the safe gun storage. Is there anything we do for that kind of consistent notification? Like, how do we, it, it went out and now, now what?
Yes, actually, Plan Two will be, Nicole and I actually have it on, on our agenda to meet, what does this look like moving forward and ongoing? So we got a ton of material sent by, so yes, that will be, we're coming up to registration period, with the families, all of the above to make it part of our, in the resolution included, has to be part of the welcoming package every year. So yes, it is on our agenda.
And do you want my help?
Sure, absolutely.
Um, I was just thinking about it, there's a very sad story today in Albany, uh, involving children and a gun that they shouldn't have had access to. Um, one more question for everyone, we made a calendar committee, what do we do now?
I would support the calendar committee meeting. Um, I think you were gonna do that, was it, you were gonna be a part of the calendar committee?
Yeah, I mean, I, again, I'll get some, Nicole Reese runs a, a tight ship on many things, so, uh, we'll get together with Nicole, right?
Okay.
Great.
Um, so just really quickly on the advocacy, uh, I don't know, Frank, this is definitely not my area expertise. I know, understanding it's not easy to go to Albany and knock on doors. Is this something that maybe this getting out in front of our skis? But, you know, I see these office hours by Senator Harkam, Assemblywoman Levinberg, they go around right the area and they have these office hours. So I don't know if this is something that they, versus, we go to Albany, they're coming to us, are we allowed to go and say, hey, I'm so-and-so and you're in Austining for your town hall thing? I don't know if that's a good idea or bad, and I, but I, I just wanted to make the point that understanding that, uh, the district has very specific needs. So personally, yeah, I would support whatever, the best mechanism, easiest to do, but squeaky wheel gets the grease, uh, moving on that. And just really, other real quick things that popped in my head on the committee stuff, I think, Catherine, you might have mentioned this and or officially proposed it was a curriculum committee. And that's something that, uh, again, one, one voice on this, but I, I, I think that would definitely be one to look at to do maybe, you know, get going. I don't know, the mechanism, do that, do we just put a resolu- do we have to, like, who writes that up, the, the remit of it, the charter, and then do we vote on it? Uh, and if so, when would be a good time to do that?
Um, so I, did I send some materials that I pulled from, I did, right? Um, so I think what makes sense is to give our superintendent time to review those materials and talk around to some other districts. And then basically talk to admin here and come back with a, a recommendation and then kind of discuss further around the table. Does that make sense?
Yeah, sure. We should, we were, there were similar, talk about a self-governance committee as well. I don't know if we need as much, um, input from administration for that since it would be related to the board. But we would need, I think we kind of stalled without having a, like, defined description of what that committee would do.
So I reached out, I think there, I sent some emails about this. I reached out to West Putt to get a sense of like what districts had this kind of committee. And the district that I was able to get in touch with was Croton. And although they established the committee with a goal, I think similar to what we're looking for, they haven't really a- actually implemented it. So there wasn't, wasn't really any usable feedback there. But the idea is that it's a committee that keeps track of things that the board has set for itself as goals to ensure that they don't lose track of things like, you know, the committee, for example, would be on top of setting, working to set the date for the summer retreat. Um, working to set the dates for the board's self-evaluation and make sure that we are on target to complete it. Um, you know, things like that. Um, sort of a, a housekeeping, uh, group so that things are taken off, are, are basically, it's a check and balance to make sure that things don't fall through the cracks. Was my understanding. I would certainly support this committee. And I think it, my personal opinion, it would be extremely helpful to me personally. So I'm begging the board to agree to establish this committee. And if not for my benefit, for the benefit of other people going forward, with the bond coming up, with the superintendent search coming up, with the very aggressive board goals that the board has set for itself. Um, I think there is a hu- huge benefit to doing this. I don't see any downside to it.
What do we need next?
I mean, we can, I can draft up or work with Mary to draft up a description of the committee for the board to consider. And then what, we would take a motion to establish a committee at the next meeting and then pick people to staff it.
So we should probably do that with, in conjunction with, with the committees that are still on the slate to potentially look at, right?
I mean, we don't have to do them all together. I think some of these are gonna be more controversial than others. Um, I mean, me personally, like, having the governance committee like tomorrow, um, would be really helpful. So I would certainly like to move that quickly. I think the curriculum committee, it really needs to look at very carefully because, you know, my concern with the way that that is done is we could really be getting ourselves involved in to admin roles. And I wanna make sure that anything along those lines does not do that. I know that the districts that do have a curriculum committee, they're really focused more on communication of curriculum changes. Like, that seems to be the primary role of the committee, which is, you know, when we're considering a change, this is how we make sure that we get community input. When we're considering a change, these are the steps that we take to notify everyone of the change, uh, along those lines. But if we were to implement something like that, I, cuz I have seen other ones from other districts where it's, it's much more i- involved in terms of rather than him, curriculum being recommended by those who are trained in pedagogy. It really is more heavily board-involved, which I'm not so sure personally I find appropriate. So I think that one's probably gonna take more analysis and time. But, um, I am certainly, look, if people have strong thoughts about the governance committee after a proposed explanation is drawn up, that certainly entitles your opinion. But any reason why we can't draft something, a description of it and put it to the board to consider at the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I think for any committee, it's a good practice to just outline what the committee is and its charter so everybody's on the same page. I would say the same with the calendar committee, like, the one thing I've asked for is that it includes both these, right, at the end of the day? Because our students are losing instruction time with discrepancies in the calendar, so that's a part of it. But I would say draft, if, I would support crafting of those two committees for you at the next meeting. People can decide who they wanna, you know, we can vote on who, or if you can find out who you want, who's gonna serve on it, and then basically we move forward with those.
No problem. Only had the self-governance committee to monitor this deadline and make sure that I drafted that. Um, all right, any other dialogue?
I do think we need to look at, you know, I know we, tonight talked about, will be the public comment period up. There's four places in the policy manual that the policy exists that needs to be revised for us to be consistent with the policy, not in conflict with what's there. I think that work should be done.
So are we asking our policy committee to take a look at those four policies again with legal? It sounds like that's probably the best approach.
Yeah, I mean, we got notes from our previous council in Ray on basically the revisions that would need to be proposed. I think those should be basically reviewed again with, with the new council. But I think when the conversation we had, it was really a focus on one policy cuz there was not awareness of the other components that exist. And so that's what I'd say, yeah, probably should go back to policy committee and basically they should talk about it with Stephanie and determine what, you know? I understand the direction, we talked about moving things up and doing it in a way, you know, and how we would do that. But making sure that we're not, you don't wanna be inconsistent with your policy. And that's what we would end up doing, I think, with the four components, if we just move forward without changing those.
Do you have the ability to put your hands on those notes, could you do a search?
Those were all in email, I think you're on them too.
Okay.
But, you know, yeah, I can try and see what I can pick up on it.
That'd be great. This was good dialogue, I enjoyed it. Anything else?
All right, um, I will take a motion to enter into executive session to discuss employment history of particular persons and contract negotiations pursuant to the Taylor laws.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Two and a half hours, folks.
Of like a clap.